On behalf of the Republic of South Africa, I wish to thank the Court for setting this matter down for an oral hearing on the earliest possible date, recognizing the extreme urgency of its circumstances. Since its initial application, South Africa found itself compelled to return to this court, both in February and March 2024, to request for the indication of additional provisional measures to prevent Israel’s persistent acts of genocide against the Palestinian people in Gaza. Sadly, South Africa is yet again compelled to return to this court in recognition of its obligation under the Genocide Convention due to the continuing annihilation of the Palestinian people, with over 35,000 now killed and most of Gaza reduced to rubble. Despite the short notice of this oral hearing, South Africa has travelled here today to do what it can to urgently stop the ongoing genocide, the gravity of the attacks requiring urgent and speedy proceedings to preserve the rights of the Palestinian people, a commitment which South Africa takes seriously. Israel is escalating its attacks on Palestinians in Gaza and in so doing is willfully breaching the binding orders of this court. Israel similarly breaches the binding resolutions of the United Nations Security Council, erroneously believing from the lack of countermeasures by the international community that it is exempt from having to respect international law. This institutionalized impunity has led Israel to engage in this genocide which has shocked the conscience of humanity. South Africa is mindful that the present genocide operates in denial of the Palestinian people’s inherent right to self-determination and collective right to return to their homes in Palestine. This genocide takes place within the context of the ongoing Nakba, the 76th anniversary of which was celebrated yesterday, the continued forced displacement of the Palestinian people, the erasure of Palestinian presence in Palestine and the placement with colonial settlers, a criminal process entrenched and maintained by 76 years of apartheid and 56 years of illegal belligerent occupation. Undoubtedly, the ongoing scenes of Palestinians being forced to repeatedly free for their lives is only remissant of the Nakba of 1948. It is a continuation of it. Seven months ago, South Africa could not have imagined that Gaza would now be mostly wiped off the map. It could not foresee that every family, every neighborhood, every class of students, every workplace would be pulled apart, killed, maimed, displaced, malnourished or starved. South Africa had hoped, when we last appeared before this court, to hold this genocidal process, to preserve Palestine and its people. Instead, Israel’s genocide has continued apace and has just reached a new and horrific stage. Israel has sought to hide its crimes through the weaponization of international humanitarian law. It pretends that the civilians it ruthlessly kills through its 2,000-pound bombs, through its targeted airstrikes, through its artificial intelligence systems, through its executions, our human shields. This whitewashing of Israel’s genocide misses the key and fundamental element, that of the massive and still mounting evidence of Israel’s genocidal intent: documented documents and videos of Israeli parliamentarians and military leaders calling for the destruction of the Palestinian people in Gaza, incitement by Israeli civil society and leading public Israeli figures, all collectively supporting the genocide and its continuation. Israel continues to show utter contempt for Palestinian life, operating with impunity. South Africa has no other option than to once again seek protection in the halls of justice for the fundamental right of the Palestinian people to their existence. Although this present application was triggered by the unfolding horrific situation in Rafah, Israel’s genocidal onslaught across Gaza has intensified over the past few days, also warranting the attention of this court. With that, Mr. President, I respectfully wish to request you to invite Professor von Lo to set out South Africa’s substantive legal arguments. I thank you.
I thank the agent of South Africa for his statement. I now invite Professor von Lo to take the floor. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, Members of the Court, it is a privilege to appear before you and an honor to have been entrusted with the presentation of this part of South Africa’s submissions. This is not a routine case. It’s not even a routine case on the use of force or on international humanitarian law. South Africa is here because the Palestinian people are facing genocide in Gaza and your previous orders have not succeeded in protecting them against that. The Court held in January that the Palestinians have a legal right to protection against genocide and that South Africa had shown that there was a real and imminent risk to the irreparable violation of that right. The Court issued an order because it considered it necessary to protect the Palestinian people against genocide and it issued a further order in March. But whether because of a lack of clarity as to precisely what the orders require or because Israel chooses to ignore them, they have not been effective. The United Nations had a framework, including the Security Council and the General Assembly, for addressing international disputes. But this part has not worked well in this case and South Africa respectfully asks the Court to reassert its authority and its role in this framework. South Africa has considered the technical legal requirements for provisional measures, change in the situation and so on, and will address them. But the essential point is that the Court has the power to act, to ensure that its previous orders and its eventual judgment will not be worthless and that the Palestinian people will be protected and that it needs to exercise that power now. Israel’s action is directed against the Palestinian people throughout Gaza and the West Bank. South Africa’s request was initially focused on Rafah because the imminent prospect of death and suffering on a massive scale resulting from Israel’s attack. But since that request was made, it has become increasingly clear that Israel’s actions in Rafah are part of the end game in which Gaza is utterly destroyed as an area capable of human habitation. This is the last step in the destruction of Gaza and its Palestinian people. It was Rafah that brought South Africa to the court, but it is all Palestinians as a national, ethnical and racial group who need the protection from genocide that the Court can order. We’ve heard expressions of outrage that anyone could accuse Israel of acting in this way. We’ve heard assurances that Israel was doing everything in its power to avoid civilian deaths as it exercised its claimed right of self-defense. We’ve heard boasts that Israel’s army is the most moral army in history and we’ve heard denials that there is famine in Gaza. For months, people, particularly in the West, have appeared unwilling to accept that the accusations are true. How could people who look like us and sound like us possibly engage in anything like genocide? But the evidence has to be faced. My colleagues will take you to that evidence, including evidence of continued bombings, attacks on people in so-called “safe areas” to which they’ve been directed by Israel, attacks on aid convoys and of mass graves and the horrors of which the corpses speak. There is no credible argument that this catastrophe is not real. The Court has already found a real and imminent risk of the violation of the rights of the Palestinian people to protection against genocide. The Court is aware of the statements of the United Nations Secretary-General, of the President of the United States, of heads of state and foreign ministers from around the world and of the heads of international aid agencies. They and the personal accounts and the news footage that emerges from Gaza tell a consistent story of unimaginable horror and it continues as we speak. Most of Gaza has been razed. The survivors who are from time to time allowed to return to their homes are returning to rubble with no homes, no running water or electricity or sewage or other working infrastructure and with the few possessions that they’ve managed to carry with them on carts or cars as they’re pushed from one so-called “safe area” to the next. If the Court does not act now, the possibility of rebuilding a viable Palestinian society in Gaza will be destroyed, at least for the lifetime of those who survive the current horrors of Gaza. The details are not always easy to verify because Israel continues to bar independent investigators and journalists from entering Gaza and over 100 journalists who were in Gaza have been killed since the Israeli attacks began. But Israel cannot block investigations by independent investigators and then say that the Court cannot proceed because there is insufficient evidence against it. The Court has to deal with this case on the basis of its appraisal of the best evidence available to it. Israel may again invoke its claimed right of self-defense, but it does not address three glaringly obvious points. First, the right of self-defense does not give a state a license to use unlimited violence. No right of self-defense can ever extend to a right to inflict massive indiscriminate violence and starvation collectively on an entire people. Second, nothing, not self-defense or anything else, can ever justify genocide. The prohibition on genocide is absolute, a peremptory norm of international law. Third, the Court ruled in 2004 that there is no right of self-defense by an occupying state against the territory that it occupies. The key point today is that Israel’s declared aim of wiping Gaza from the map is about to be realized. Further, evidence of appalling crimes and atrocities is literally being destroyed and bulldozed, in effect wiping the slate clean for those who have committed these crimes and making a mockery of justice. The Court is not powerless and South Africa submits with respect that it must do something to assert not only its own authority but the authority of international law. South Africa submits that in order to secure the entry and distribution of food and humanitarian supplies and to save lives, a halt to Israeli military operations across Gaza is essential. The overwhelming weight of opinion among states and international organizations is the same. A halt to military operations in Gaza is necessary to comply with the previous orders that the Court has already imposed. If Israel continues to deny that its bombing and shelling and military incursions and blocking of roads and entry points and its other military operations in Gaza are preventing the fulfillment of the Court’s orders, the Court needs to spell it out explicitly for Israel and for the benefit of any other states that are still providing aid or assistance to Israel in its campaign to eradicate Palestine. These points will be developed by South Africa’s Council. First, John Dugard will explain the jurisdictional and other preconditions for the exercise of the Court’s power toward provisional measures and demonstrate that they are met. Second, Max Duplessis will set out the recent events that have necessitated South Africa’s return to the Court and particularly those concerning Rafah. Then Adila Haseem will explain the scale and imminence of the risk facing Palestinians in Gaza and after that, Tembeke Kokutobi will show that Israel’s actions have a pattern and an explicit purpose that clearly indicates that the aim is to eradicate Palestine. And finally, Lina Negrawi will explain the remedies that South Africa seeks and the agent will return to read out South Africa’s prayer for relief. That, Mr. President, Members of the Court, concludes my part of this submission and I thank you for your attention and ask that you now call on Professor Dugard.
I thank Professor von Lo for his statement. I now give the floor to Professor Jean Dugard. You have your floor, sir.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, it is a privilege to before you on behalf of the Republic of South Africa. In my speech today, I will briefly address the subject of jurisdiction and then examine the circumstances that give rise to our request for further provisional measures. In this order of 26 January of this year, the Court found that the applicant had prima facie established the existence of a dispute between it and the respondent relating to the application of the Genocide Convention and that the Court had jurisdiction in terms of Article 9 of the Genocide Convention. In this order of 28 March, the Court found that there was no reason to revisit this decision. It is submitted that this conclusion remains valid for the present proceedings. The Court also found that Palestinians in the Gaza Strip have a plausible right to be protected from acts of genocide and that South Africa had the right to seek compliance with this obligation. Again, the Court declared that this finding need not be revisited in this decision of 28 March. Again, it is submitted that this conclusion remains valid. The Court has found that South Africa has advanced a plausible genocide claim. On 26 January, the Court found that the situation in Gaza was one that required urgent attention and that there was a risk of irreparable prejudice. This was confirmed in the order of 28 March and it is a situation that continues today. Indeed, it is further heightened now in the context of Israel’s brutal attacks on Rafah and subsequent intensified bombing across the north and middle areas of Gaza. Mr. President, on the basis of the above findings, the Court ordered a number of provisional measures on 26 January. On 28 March, the Court found that the circumstances of the situation had changed in terms of Article 76 of the Rules of Court as a result of the risk of famine and ordered three more provisional measures against Israel. Today, Mr. President, South Africa approaches the Court for a new provisional measure, new provisional measures, to ensure that the rights in issue in the proceedings, including the right of Palestinians to be protected from acts of genocide, will be protected. The Rules of Court allow the Court to order new provisional measures when new facts are established or there has been some change in the situation which justifies modification of the existing orders. It is, of course, impossible to provide an absolute definition of new facts or change in the situation as it is necessary to have regard to the situation in each and every case. Decisions of the Court involving provisional measures have dealt with a change in the situation arising from new facts in completely different circumstances. Cases have dealt with matters of life and death, territorial change and freedom of movement. Each case depends upon its own set of facts and whether these facts have so altered the situation that new provisional measures are justified on the part of the Court. In issuing its March order, the Court considered that developments since January 2024, which it found to be exceptionally grave, constituted a change in the situation within the meaning of Article 76 of the Rules of Court. It also found that the previous provisional measures that it had indicated did not fully address the consequences arising from the changes in the situation. And this led the Court to order further provisional measures. The changes in the situation since March of this year are in many ways grave as though they do justify the indication of further provisional measures. On 26 January this year, the Court found that there was a catastrophic humanitarian situation in the Gaza Strip which was at serious risk of deteriorating further before the Court renders its final judgment and this warranted provisional measures. On 28 March, the Court found that the catastrophic living conditions of the Palestinians in the Gaza Strip have deteriorated further, in particular in view of the prolonged and widespread deprivation of food and other basic necessities. Mr. President, Members of the Court, it is difficult to imagine that the situation could get worse, but unfortunately it has. In the early days of the Gaza War, Israel forced Palestinians to relocate to the south, to the Rafah Governorate. 1.5 million people were crammed into this inhospitable area in the Rafah Governorate which appeared to offer safety from Israel’s bombing, artillery fire and the brutality of its forces influenced by genocidal incitement by its leaders. World leaders warned that an assault on Gaza and in particular on Rafah resulting in the forced and arbitrary evacuation of the already displaced Palestinians to even less hospitable parts of Gaza without adequate food, water, shelter and hospitals would have disastrous consequences. The Director General of the World Health Organization declared that a military incursion into Rafah will plunge the crisis into unprecedented levels of humanitarian need. A ceasefire is needed for the sake of humanity. Israel, Mr. President, has not heeded this warning. It has not even fulfilled its own undertaking not to embark on an assault on Rafah without a proper evacuation plan. Instead, it has gone ahead and embarked on an attack on Rafah. The Rafah Governorate has been bombed, subjected to artillery fire and ground incursions. The Rafah Crossing is closed and the Kerem Shalom Crossing is mostly disabled. Mr. President, my colleagues will provide you with the full account of Israel’s genocidal acts in the Gaza Strip. It is my task to briefly indicate the new facts required by Article 75.3 and the change in the situation required by Article 76.1. Mr. President, this application for further provisional measures is prompted by Israel’s assault on Rafah. It is this assault that constitutes the new facts, the change in circumstances. Rafah is the last refuge in Gaza for 1.5 million Palestinians, the majority of whom have been forcibly displaced from north and central Gaza. Rafah is the last viable part of Gaza for humanitarian, public administration, the provision of basic services and medical care. Israel has now commenced its long-threatened assault on Rafah. It has ordered the evacuation of Palestinians in Rafah to the barren sand dunes of Al-Mawasi. It has closed critical border crossings to humanitarian aid, medical supplies, goods and fuel upon which the population of Rafah depends. Displacement, famine and suffering are now the lot of the Palestinian group. Israel’s actions are in violation of fundamental rules of humanitarian law, but in addition, they provide evidence of the crime of genocide in terms of Articles 2, A, B, C and D of the Genocide Convention. Mr. President, Members of the Court, this attack is the final blow that is intended to destroy the Palestinian group in Gaza. That this is the intention of the final operation will be made clear by Mr. Nkwekogbe. Mr. President, since South Africa filed the present application for provisional measures, Israel has intensified its offensive in the north and in central Gaza. In these circumstances, we have requested the Court to issue a provisional measure that orders Israel to cease its military activities throughout Gaza and to withdraw from the territory. Such an order alone can bring an end to Israel’s genocide in Gaza. That the Court has the power to order such a provisional measure is clear. The Court has stated that in terms of Article 75.2 of the Rules of Court, it has the power under its statute when a request for provisional measures has been made to indicate provisional measures that are in whole or in part other than those requested. Mr. President, Members of the Court, this concludes my speech. I thank you for your attention.
I thank Professor Jean Dugard for his statement. I now give the floor to Professor Max Duplessis. You have the floor, sir.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, it’s a privilege to appear before you on behalf of South Africa. My task is to address this Court on the new facts and the grave changes in the situation in Rafah that is fast leading to the deadliest phase in this ongoing genocide. Those are the circumstances that compel South Africa to return to the Court to seek urgent further or modified provisional measures against Israel. Judges of this Court have recognized that the underlying reason for the Judges of this court have recognized that the underlying reason for the court's January and March orders was that the very right of existence of the Palestinian population in Gaza is currently at risk of irreparable prejudice, and that the only effective way of preserving the right of existence of the protected group is through the function of prevention. South Africa seeks these provisional measures before it's too late for prevention to be possible, let alone effective. This court noted that the situation in Rafa was already perilous in its decision of sixteen February, and instead of complying with this court's decisions of January, February, and March, Israel has defied this court by trapping, besieging, and bombarding an overcrowded Rafa, exacerbating the security and the safety of a million and a half highly vulnerable Palestinians. Mr. President, no one in Gaza is safe because, as the United Nations has repeatedly made clear, nowhere in Gaza is safe. Palestinians were instructed by Israeli evacuation orders to move south to Rafa and seek refuge there from the bombardment in the north. Yet for months, the expanding population scrambling for refuge in Rafa has been explicitly told by Israel that they are not safe and that Israel does not intend for them to be safe. The international community has witnessed Israeli soldiers preparing for the planned invasion of Rafa, filming themselves, chanting "Tear down Rafa!" And Israel's intention is typified by statements such as that of Israel's Minister of Finance, Mr. Smotrich, a member of the Security Cabinet, who has explained, and I quote, "There are no half-measures: Rafa, Dair al-Balah, Nusayrat, total annihilation. You shall blot out the remembrance of Amalek from under heaven; there is no place under heaven," close quote. Mr. Nukat Tobi will deal in careful detail with intention that is so clearly evident in such statements and by Israel's conduct. Now, Israel has resolutely resisted all international efforts to persuade and cajole it from eventually attacking Rafa. As we contemplate the horror of recent events and the significance of Rafa for Israel's ongoing assault, the reminders regrettably of Shebronnitz come into view. Rafa's prominence in the eyes of both the Palestinians in Gaza and the international community lies in it being the most visible of the safe areas in Gaza, which has received significant attention in the international media. To paraphrase the International Criminal Tribunal for Yugoslavia in a decision endorsed by this court, "Israel's spectacular destruction of Rafa, despite the assurances of the international community, including this court, and in the full glare of the international media, is intended by Israel to serve as a potent example to all Palestinians of their vulnerability and their defenselessness in the face of Israeli military forces, and to be emblematic of the fate of all Palestinians in Gaza," to use Mr. Smotrich's words, "that there is no place under heaven that they save." South Africa has made clear in its request of ten May that not only is there nowhere for the one and a half million displaced people and others in Rafa to safely flee, so much of Gaza having been reduced to rubble, but that if Rafa is similarly destroyed, there will be little left of Gaza or prospects for the survival of Palestinian life in the territory. Rafa is where Gaza's largest still partially functioning hospitals are situated. Attacks on Rafa's hospitals, akin to those mounted by Israel against hospitals elsewhere in the Strip, would therefore deal a fatal blow to Gaza's already crippled healthcare system. And at the same time as these assaults, aid is being throttled. That throttling is done defiantly and deliberately. This court ordered on 28 March that, in conformity with its obligations under the Genocide Convention, and in view of the worsening conditions of life faced by Palestinians in Gaza, in particular the spread of famine and starvation, that Israel was to take all necessary and effective measures to ensure, without delay, in full cooperation with the United Nations, the unhindered provision at scale by all concerned of urgently needed basic services and humanitarian assistance. That included an express order that Israel increase the capacity and number of land crossing points and maintaining them open for as long as necessary. And Israel was also ordered to ensure with immediate effect that its military does not prevent through any action the delivery of urgently needed humanitarian assistance. Why was that order so critical? Well, because the two border crossings in Rafa, which Israel has ceased and shut down, are the main entry points for lifesaving humanitarian aid and other goods entering Gaza and for the entry and exit of people, including humanitarian workers, medics, medical evacuees, and Palestinians trying to flee the conflict. Israel's seizure of those crossings places Israel in control of all access to and from Gaza. Its current closure of the crossings has served to seal Gaza hermetically from the outside world, further torpedoing the delivery of aid to and within Gaza. And as the primary humanitarian hub for assistance in Gaza, if Rafa falls, so too does Gaza. And deliberately herding one and a half million Palestinians into Rafa and then carrying out a full-scale bombardment while sealing off entry and exit for lifesaving aid to an already devastated population, while exposing them to famine and human suffering, leaves only one inference regrettably, and that is of genocidal intent. I turn now to consider the topic of Rafa as a supposed place of refuge. Ten days ago, Rafa was described as the last refuge for Palestinians in Gaza. It was the only remaining area of the Strip which had not yet been substantially destroyed by Israeli attacks. Over the past seven months, hundreds of thousands of Palestinians were ordered by Israel to evacuate to Rafa for their safety, some forcibly being displaced for the ninth time. Desperate, terrified, and clinging to life by a thread, these Palestinians have sought shelter, often in makeshift tents or under sheets of scrap plastic in the tiny and densely crowded city of Rafa, hoping against hope to stay alive in the ongoing Israeli bombardment. A city of children, Rafa has become home to some six hundred thousand Palestinian children and babies, many of them orphaned or disabled by Israel. And recall that they joined the staggering reality, according to UN Women, that among the dead in Gaza are an estimated six thousand mothers leaving nineteen thousand children orphaned. In addition to being the population center, Rafa is the primary humanitarian hub of Gaza, as I've said, and the only remaining area of the beleaguered Strip with the infrastructure and the resources to host the over one million displaced Palestinians, albeit in a situation that has been described by the UN as a pressure cooker of despair. But Rafa, Your Excellencies, is no refuge. It's no safe place. On six May, Israeli forces ordered around one hundred thousand Palestinians to evacuate the eastern portion of Rafa. Many were simply unable to flee. Children and elderly people are so starved that they can barely walk. They cannot just relocate to another area, to so-called safe zones. It's just not possible. And even for those who are able to leave, they have nowhere left to go. Yet again, Israel's use of evacuation orders and designation of humanitarian zones are purely performative. They endanger rather than protect civilian life. So-called humanitarian zones are not safe. The zones are policed by the same Israeli forces who have attacked Palestinians in their homes, in makeshift tents, in public markets, schools, and playgrounds, in agricultural greenhouses, while waiting for aid, by aid dropping from the sky, while attempting to return to their homes, despite waving white flags, and above all else, while sheltering in and seeking treatment from hospitals. Rafa as a place of refuge or safety remains a cruel distortion for another reason, Your Excellencies. For months, Israel threatened to invade Rafa, leading the UN Secretary General to warn that an assault on Rafa would be a political calamity and a humanitarian nightmare, which was also, of course, highlighted by this court in its decision of sixteen February. We are to be fooled, this court urgently, because Palestinians are now having to live out that nightmare. On seven May, just fifteen hours after the evacuation orders were issued, Israel commenced a severe and sustained military assault on Rafa, which is ongoing, and it has intensified in the intervening period until today, killing and injuring Palestinians and destroying their makeshift homes and the remaining infrastructure necessary to sustain life in Gaza, including all aid and medical infrastructure in its path. Israel deliberately attacked the very shelters to which it directed Palestinians to flee. So Palestinian families in Gaza are left to make an impossible choice. Either they stay, trapped and likely killed alongside their loved ones in Rafa, or they head out into the few bits of remaining land in Gaza, now filling up with tents and shacks built of bits of wood and nylon and vulnerable to attacks. The overwhelming majority have no means to flee other than on foot. There is nothing humanitarian about these humanitarian zones. Then on eleven May, the Israeli military issued a new round of evacuation orders affecting some thirty-four neighborhoods in eastern Rafa and north Gaza. UN agencies estimate in total that approximately twenty percent of Gaza's population have been displaced yet again in the past week alone. By ten May, an estimated one hundred and ten thousand people had fled Rafa. By yesterday, fifteen May, this number had increased to around six hundred thousand, according to the UN. And all the while, and now by these actions, Israel's genocide of Palestinians continues through military attacks and man-made starvation, and while mocking this court's provisional measures of protecting the rights of Palestinians under the Genocide Convention. A critical part, Your Excellencies, of Israel's defiance of this court's orders comes in relation to aid and food itself. Israel has seized control of both the Rafa and the Kerem Shalom Crossings, taking total control of all entry and exit of people and goods into Gaza as a whole, choking off the two main arteries, forgetting lifesaving aid to Gaza's starving population. And in so doing, it has plunged Gaza into unprecedented levels of humanitarian need, even as compared with the catastrophic levels of the previous seven months that led this court to conclude that famine was setting in back in March. The closure of the crossings means that Palestinians starving in a full-blown man-made famine are now further deprived of food, where Israel's attacks have systematically decimated food production systems throughout Gaza. It means that fuel cannot get in to run incubators and lifesaving machinery in hospitals, water pumps and wells. It means that people, including the chronically sick and injured, cannot get out of Gaza, and vital aid cannot get into Gaza. And this poses an overwhelmingly grave threat, not only to the Palestinian people but also to United Nations personnel and aid workers trying to bring some desperately needed relief. Despite Israel's announcements that it would open Kerem Shalom on eight May, on ten May, the UN reported that no supplies were passing through any crossings in southern Gaza. As of fifteen May, the Rafa Crossing remains closed, and there is a continued lack of safe and logistically viable access to the Kerem Shalom Crossing. The crisis could not be more urgent. And that is so where Israel's assaults on Rafa and the closure of these critical crossings are aggravating the famine-like conditions across Gaza, where over a million people are predicted to face catastrophe, IPC Phase Five, food insecurity levels through July, which is just around the corner. Bakeries have been forced to shut down because they don't have fuel. Ongoing attacks in Rafa have rendered humanitarian warehouses inaccessible, and responders providing food aid will run out of food supplies within the coming days. In addition to killing and harming Palestinians, the Israeli assault on Rafa has deliberately inflicted on them conditions of life calculated to bring about their physical and biological destruction. This is starkly illustrated through Israel's destruction of Rafa's hospitals. Due to the ongoing hostilities in its vicinity and the military operation in Rafa, the Al-Najjar Hospital, the main medical facility in the entire Rafa Governance and one of Gaza's largest remaining partially functioning hospitals, is no longer functional. It was a lifeline for two hundred dialysis patients per day whom the World Health Organization previously warned would die if the hospital were to shut down. Fears for the Emirati Hospital are also particularly acute. This is one of the last partially functioning maternity hospitals in the whole of Gaza, which was until recently handling almost half of Gaza's daily total of one hundred and eighty births. It has already been forced to stop admitting patients, and medics warn that without a doubt every single one of the forty-five babies in the neonatal intensive care unit and the special intensive care unit will die if the hospital is occupied. And then on thirteen May, medical staff at the Kuwaiti Hospital in Rafa received an evacuation order from Israeli forces. As one of the last remaining hospitals in Rafa, it had only around sixteen beds available for the more than one million people sheltering in Rafa, and its closure will mean the complete collapse of what was the limping healthcare system in Rafa. Mr. President, allow me to conclude. Israel's grand incursion into Rafa has been described by the United Nations as one of the darkest mornings in this seven-month nightmare. With Rafa's destruction ongoing as South Africa speaks to this court today, the destruction of Gaza itself will be complete. The change in the situation in Gaza and the new facts in Rafa that I've described demand the provisional measures that Ms. Negraley will speak to. The necessity could not be starker, the magnitude and the gravity of the situation facing the Palestinian people in Gaza now exemplified in Rafa. South Africa has thus been motivated to come urgently to this court to prevent the destruction of the final Palestinian governance of Gaza with its homes, its hospitals, its schools, its libraries, its businesses, shelters, its mosques, to which Israel has not yet laid complete waste. And South Africa has come as quickly as possible to the court to ensure that the exhausted Palestinian men, women, and children who have sought refuge in Rafa are protected from a bloodbath, and it has sought urgent protective relief because of the now pressing need to ensure the survival of the Palestinian people in Gaza as a group and their protection from further harm, starvation, disease, and death by Israel's closure of the Rafa and Kerem Shalom Crossings, fatally impacting the so desperately needed delivery of lifesaving humanitarian aid, basic services, and medical assistance across Gaza. But Israel's genocidal acts in Rafa, Mr. President and distinguished members of the court, cannot be understood without appreciating the overall genocidal context in which Israel's Rafa operation is embedded. My colleague, Dr. Hasim, will outline this along with the crippling effects of Rafa now in harrowing display across the Gaza Strip as a whole. I thank you, Mr. President.
Professor Max Duplessis for his statement. I now give the floor to Ms. Adila Hasim.
Mr. President, members of the court, it is a privilege to appear again before you on behalf of South Africa. But it's also tragic that we are back here, four months after this court first ordered provisional measures in this case against the state of Israel. South Africa is compelled to appear before you with this urgent request for provisional measures in circumstances where the alarm sounded by the court on twenty-eight March two thousand and twenty-four that, quote, "all the indicators of genocidal activities are flashing red in Gaza," end quote, and in Rafa in particular, is sounding louder than ever before. This is because Israel has defied every single provisional measure indicated by this court in its orders of twenty-sixth January and twenty-eighth March and in its decision of sixteen February. As I stand before you today, Palestinians in Gaza are not safe, they are not secure, they are still being subjected to an ongoing and intensifying genocide at the hands of Israel. Their future hangs in the balance. Mr. Duplessis explained in his address the assault unfolding in Rafa, the last area in Gaza in which Palestinian life can meaningfully be sustained. The assault on Rafa, which has triggered this application, is inexplicably linked to the ongoing genocidal conduct being committed across Gaza. Mr. President, I place before the court again a map of Gaza. I remind the court I remind the court that Gaza is a narrow strip of land of approximately three hundred and sixty-five square kilometers. It is just six kilometers wide. The length from top to bottom is just forty-four kilometers, which is about the distance between this court and Skippel Airport. In South African terms, this is even less than the distance between Johannesburg and Pretoria. Rafah lies in the south of Gaza with an area of approximately sixty square kilometers. This time last year, Rafah was home to around two hundred and seventy-five thousand Palestinians. As a result of Israel's onslaught and its evacuation orders covering more than three-quarters of Gaza's total territory, one point two million additional Palestinians fled into Rafah under order of Israel as a place of last refuge. Now, Israel has issued further evacuation orders directing Palestinians to leave Rafah. In just the past week, six hundred thousand Palestinians have been forced to flee from Rafah, but with nowhere to go. There is a total collapse of infrastructure, of sanitation, of water, of food supply. In short, the conditions necessary to sustain life for the two point three million Palestinians in Gaza. The picture on the screen shows Palestinians last month starting to return to their homes after Israel's withdrawal of its occupation of Khan Yunis. As we can all see, there is nothing left. Israel's most recent actions in Rafah bring its coordinated plan aimed at the destruction of the essential foundations of Palestinian life in Gaza into horrifying focus. We are in the final stages of that coordinated plan, where the different actions of Israel, to use Lemkin's terminology, the systematic disintegration of the political and social institutions and the economic existence of national groups and the destruction of the personal security, liberty, health, dignity and even the lives of Palestinians have led to the present precipice. Israel has the power over each and every Palestinian man, woman and child in Gaza to determine if they live or how they die. History warns us what happens next. We cannot simply stand by waiting for that to happen again. It is not possible to recount every story of every Palestinian who is suffering at the hands of Israel's relentless genocidal campaign. Indeed, this court has held in Bosnian genocide that, quote, "It is sufficient to examine those facts that would illuminate the question of intent or illustrate the claim by the applicant of a pattern of acts committed against members of the group, such as to lead to an inference from such pattern of the existence of a specific intent", end quote. In these submissions, I show that Israel's genocidal acts against Palestinians in Rafah form part of a continuing escalating pattern of conduct across Gaza that provides persuasive and consistent evidence of Israel's genocidal conduct. In light of these new facts, South Africa seeks an order from the court, the only order that will clearly protect what is left of Palestinian life in Gaza. It seeks an explicit order that Israel cease its military activities, not only in Rafah, but throughout Gaza. Turning then to the genocidal acts. In my remaining time before you, I will highlight the following features of the genocidal campaign by Israel. First, Israel has continued to kill Palestinians in Gaza, including women and children, at an alarming rate. Second, as a result of Israel's onslaught, Palestinians in Gaza are facing what the Under-Secretary General of the UN has described as the worst humanitarian crisis he has seen for more than fifty years. Third, Israel's systematic targeting and bombardment of hospitals and medical facilities and its throttling of humanitarian aid has pushed Gaza's medical system to collapse. Fourth, Israel's direct attack and siege of Gaza's biggest hospitals has led to the uncovering of mass graves evidencing Israeli massacres of Palestinians seeking shelter and medical treatment. Finally, most recently, Israel has intensified its attacks in the north while pressing on with its Rafah offensive, leaving displaced Palestinians nowhere safe to go. I will take these in turn. The first feature of the genocidal conduct: killing. Since South Africa appeared before the court on eleven January, twenty twenty-four, at least eleven thousand five hundred Palestinians have been directly killed by Israel. The majority of these casualties are women and children in an enclave where nearly fifty percent of the population are children. This onslaught has occurred despite the binding orders issued by this court and the binding Security Council resolution on twenty-five March, twenty twenty-four, demanding an immediate ceasefire for the month of Ramadan. In fact, as UNICEF pointed out, a double-digit number of children were killed within hours of that resolution. Two mothers and four children are killed every hour. UNRWA head Philippe Lazarini says, "There are no words left that can do any justice to the people of Gaza." The numbers of dead and injured defy comprehension. At least thirty-five thousand Palestinians killed and seventy-nine thousand injured, with ten thousand more reportedly missing or under the rubble, up to one point seven million displaced, most multiple times, and more than seventy percent of all housing stock in Gaza and more than eighty percent in parts of northern region damaged or destroyed. The second feature is a humanitarian catastrophe. Israel's coordinated plan in Gaza has resulted in a humanitarian crisis, the crisis that this court warned about in January, February and in March. What Palestinians in Gaza face has been described as, quote, "apocalyptic levels of pain and injustice", given that food and other vital aid cannot get in and people, including the chronically sick and injured, cannot get out", end quote. These apocalyptic conditions look set to worsen with Israel's ongoing attacks on the north, middle and south will fill with full-blown famine in the north, moving its way south and where Israel's blockade on food, fuel and medical supplies continue. Gaza's children have suffered particularly severely. More than fourteen thousand have been killed. Thousands more have been injured or lost family members. While an estimated seventeen thousand children are unaccompanied or separated. Nearly all of Gaza's children have been exposed to traumatic experiences, the consequences of which will last a lifetime. Make no mistake, these conditions are a direct result of Israel's military onslaught on the besieged enclave with full knowledge of the destructive consequences of this humanitarian crisis. In these circumstances, in these circumstances, the thwarting of humanitarian aid cannot be seen as anything but the deliberate snuffing out of Palestinian lives, starvation to the point of famine, obstructing aid in the face of famine and killing of at least two hundred aid workers. For the court's previous orders to be effective, for the provision of humanitarian aid urgently and at scale, Israel has to be ordered to stop its military offensive. The third feature of genocidal conduct relates to the crippling of Gaza's medical system. Israel's offensive on Rafah has further reduced access to healthcare in an already decimated health system. Only two out of thirty-six hospitals are located within the so-called humanitarian area designated by Israel. In just six days, between six and twelve May, Médecins Sans Frontières recorded that it was forced to suspend its life-sustaining activities at Al-Shabura Clinic, hand over its activities at Al-Emirati Hospital and was forced to close its activities in Rafah Indonesian Field Hospital as it could not guarantee the security and safety of patients and staff with the ongoing offensive. The assault on healthcare within Rafah is the culmination of a pattern of attacks on healthcare services in Gaza through which the main hospitals across Gaza have completely stopped functioning. After Israel's military assault, pardon me, after Israel's military seized the Rafah and Kerem Shalom crossings last week and prohibited the importation of life-giving fuel to hospitals on thirteen May, the European Gaza Hospital completely ran out of fuel and experienced a total blackout. Without fuel, hospitals cannot sustain incubators, respirators and lifesaving machinery. Healthcare in Gaza is crippled by shortages of food, fuel, oxygen, medicines and anesthetics. The obstetric and maternity health system in Gaza is virtually non-existent and every functioning medical facility is overwhelmed with patients. Babies continue to die of malnutrition and starvation. Nor is there any escape. Medical evacuations are impossible. Israel has seized control of all entry and exit points into and out of Gaza, trapping an already suffering population and inflicting conditions of life calculated to bring about Palestinians' physical and biological destruction in clear violation of Article Two C of the Genocide Convention. The fourth feature of genocidal conduct is the discovery of mass graves. In its targeted attack on hospitals, Israel has killed hundreds of civilians, including doctors and medical staff, turning centers built for healing into mass graves full of the decomposing bodies of men, women and children. On ten April, a UN inspection team reported that Khan Yunis was reduced to rubble and dirt and returnees discovered ghastly scenes of unearthed mass graves containing the massacred bodies of the elderly, women, children and men at Al-Nassr Hospital. Blue scrubs reportedly still clothed the dead bodies of medical staff. Many were decapitated. Three hundred and twenty-four decomposing bodies were discovered, many stripped and handcuffed. Of these, only forty-two were identified. Another thirty bodies were discovered in two mass graves in Al-Shifa Hospital with only twelve bodies identified, prompting the UN Secretary General to call for the immediate access of independent investigators. These bodies included women and children with many reportedly showing signs of torture and summary executions. The recent discovery of multiple mass graves, Israel's ongoing chokehold on information coming out of Gaza and complete refusal to allow independent investigators in means that we will not know how many Palestinians have been killed by Israel's military campaign for some time, if at all, and only if the evidence is not obliterated by Israel's ongoing military operations in what Commissioner Volker Turk describes as the prevailing climate of impunity. It is for this reason that South Africa seeks an order requiring Israel to facilitate the unimpeded access into Gaza of fact-finding missions, officials, investigators and journalists. The fifth feature of genocidal conduct relates to Israel's intensified attacks in the north. During the past week, while our eyes and attention were drawn to the horrific acts unfolding in Rafah, Israeli tanks rolled again into northern Gaza, an area that Israel reported that it had cleared many months ago. On eleven May, Israel issued evacuation orders over twenty-two neighborhoods in Jabalia in northern Gaza. At least a hundred thousand people in the north have been forced to flee their devastated homes. That same day, that same day of the evacuation orders, Israel began a relentless assault on northern Gaza, killing Palestinian families in their homes and children near the Taubah Mosque within the Jabalia Refugee Cramp. Journalists report that they have no idea about the number of people killed in north Gaza for the past day as medics are unable to move due to the heavy bombing. Many people are still trapped under the rubble, waiting for rescue, but no one is able to move under the reins of bombs. As I stand before you, Mr. President, it continues. On fourteen and fifteen May, just On fourteen and fifteen May, just yesterday and the day before yesterday, the Israeli military issued two new sets of evacuation orders for all or part of nineteen neighbourhoods in northern Gaza, displacing even more Palestinians in search of safety. Mr. President, these are the credible facts. Israel will no doubt once again deny and cast aspersions on the information presented by South Africa and provided by the UN and other international actors, including those this court itself has relied on. It will do so while continuing to systematically attack all independent sources of information about what is taking place in Gaza and refuse international investigators and journalists' entry into Gaza. Having denied access to Gaza and attempted to discredit all other sources of information, Israel is then free to portray a picture of Gaza radically at odds with all other accounts. Just yesterday, the Prime Minister's office proclaimed that, quote, "The humanitarian catastrophe that has been spoken of has not been realized, nor will it," end quote. A bold denial of the findings of UN experts and other independent agencies, such as the IPC. As this court pointed out, the IPC is a global partnership of organisations, including, amongst others, the World Food Programme, the Food and Agriculture Organisation of the UN and the World Health Organisation. Ultimately, Israel says only what suits them, only if and when it suits them, notwithstanding the facts on the ground that have been presented here today. Despite the court providing Israel with an opportunity to respond to South Africa's current request, Israel has failed to submit a response. In conclusion, Mr. President, members of the court, the risks to the people of Gaza are imminent, irreparable and rapidly increasing. This risk gives rise to the necessity for the remedy that we seek in this application, a remedy that will end Israel's genocidal campaign against Palestinians in Gaza. All of what I have described must stop. Israel must be stopped. South Africa is before you again today to respectfully ask the court to invoke its powers under Article seventy-five-two of the Rules of the Court, to order a remedy that will stop Israel. Mr. President, that concludes my submissions on the genocidal conduct. I thank you for your patient attention, and I ask that you call Mr. Nukai Toby to the podium to address the court on genocidal intent. Thank you.
I thank Ms. Haseem for her statement. I now give the floor to Mr. Tembek Gukai Toby. You have the floor, sir.
Mr. President and members of the court, it is a privilege to appear on behalf of South Africa. Today's request for the indication of further provisional measures and/or the modification of the existing measures has been triggered by the military assault of Israel on Rafa, which began on the sixth and seventh of May twenty twenty-four and has intensified and escalated since. As shown by Mr. Duplessis and Ms. Haseem, the military attack is genocidal in its pattern. I shall demonstrate that it is also consistent with the explicit stated and continuing genocidal intent of the state of Israel. Firstly, to the knowledge of Israel, Rafa is the last refuge of Gaza, the only remaining area in the Gaza Strip which has not been substantially destroyed by Israel, the only area that can host displaced people, the only remaining centre of humanitarian aid and the host to one of the few remaining large hospitals across the entirety of Gaza. Rafa is the last stage of the total annihilation of Palestinian life. Without Rafa, the possibility to rebuild and reconstruct Palestinian life will be lost forever. For Palestinians to continue to exist as a protected group under the Genocide Convention, they need a place from which to rebuild. As we stand here today, Rafa is that place, the last stand. Secondly, Israel also knows of explicit warnings about the genocidal consequences of an attack in Rafa. On sixth May twenty twenty-four, the Director General of the World Health Organisation warned that a full military incursion into Rafa will plunge the crisis into unprecedented levels of humanitarian need. On eighth May twenty twenty-four, two days after the military attack had begun, he stressed that one of the three hospitals in Rafa, Al-Najjar, was no longer functioning due to the ongoing hostilities in its vicinity and the military operation in Rafa. Since the border was closed, the United Nations was prevented from bringing fuel without which all humanitarian operations would stop. Martin Griffiths, the United Nations Relief Chief, has rung alarm bells. He has warned that the simplest truth is that a ground operation in Rafa will be nothing short of a tragedy beyond words. No humanitarian plan can counter that. The rest is detail. Palestinians do not need any more diplomatic gesturing, no more abstract words, no more virtuous condemnations and denunciations of Israel's actions. There is no more time to spare. It is simply now or never. Israel has knowledge of the pronouncements I have cited above. After all, each of them was made publicly. Thirdly, the state of Israel knows of the decisions of this court, which bear on it as a state party to the Genocide Convention directly and require of it to respect its obligations under the convention and the moral and legal authority of this court. The decision of this court on twenty-sixth January twenty twenty-four noted that the civilian population in the Gaza Strip is extremely vulnerable and that the catastrophic humanitarian situation in the Gaza Strip is at serious risk of deteriorating further before this court renders its final judgment. Bearing this in mind, the court recognised that the military operation conducted by Israel after seven October twenty twenty-three has resulted in a dealia in tens of thousands of deaths and injuries and the destruction of homes, schools, medical facilities and other vital infrastructure, as well as displacement on a massive scale. In light of this situation, Israel was ordered to ensure with immediate effect that its military does not commit any acts that fall within Article Two of the Genocide Convention. One of the measures indicated expressly required of Israel to take all measures within its power to prevent and punish the direct and public incitement to commit genocide in relation to members of the Palestinian group in the Gaza Strip. In the decision of sixteen February twenty twenty-four, this court was compelled to demand that Israel immediately and effectively implements the court's order of twenty-sixth January twenty twenty-four. This court cautioned that the most recent developments in the Gaza Strip and in Rafa in particular would exponentially increase what is already a humanitarian nightmare with untold regional consequences. In the order of twenty-eighth March twenty twenty-four, this court observed with regret the existence of exceptionally grave circumstances since its order of twenty-sixth January twenty twenty-four and its decision of sixteen February twenty twenty-four, that the catastrophic living conditions of the Palestinians in the Gaza Strip had deteriorated further, in particular in view of the prolonged and widespread deprivation of food and other basic necessities to which the Palestinians in the Gaza Strip have been subjected. The court issued its orders clearly highlighting the worsening conditions of life faced by Palestinians in Gaza. Israel was ordered to ensure with immediate effect that its military, through any action, does not commit acts which violate the rights of Palestinians under the Genocide Convention. So far, Mr. President, what I have said is not inference, not imputation. It is direct knowledge which bears on the state of Israel, its political leaders and the members of its army. They know about Rafa and its centrality to the sustenance of Palestinian life at the present moment. They know the views of the organs of the United Nations about the consequences of a military attack on Rafa. They know what this court has ordered on each of the three occasions I have referenced. Yet, Israel's leaders have continued to incite genocide and to express their own genocidal intent. In doing so, not only has Israel ignored its obligations as a state party to the Genocide Convention, it has also treated this court with contempt and threatened the rule of law. Let me demonstrate this. Members of the Israeli Ministerial Committee on National Security Affairs and the War Cabinet have simply continued with incitement to genocide. First, the Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu, who is a member of the War Cabinet and the Security Cabinet, has gone beyond any reference to Hamas alone. Instead, he has described Israel's aims in the military assault as being to ensure that Gaza will never again constitute a threat to Israel. He describes Israel's objective as being to achieve total victory, underscoring that no force in the world will stop us. We will stand alone, emphasising that Israel will fight with its fingernails. Second, the Israeli Minister of Defence Yoav Galant, a member of both the War Cabinet and the Security Cabinet, has made it clear that Israel is taking apart neighbourhood after neighbourhood and will reach every location in Gaza. Third, the Israeli Minister of Finance Bezalel Smotrich, a member of the Security Cabinet, has asserted in terms "There are no half-measures: Rafa, Deir al-Balah, Nusret, total annihilation." He goes on to say, "We are negotiating with the ones that should not have existed for a long time." For Israeli members of Cabinet, it is as if there is no court order which binds them. They are not the only ones, regrettably. In an interview broadcast on Israeli television on three May twenty twenty-four, the vice-chair of the International Arm of the Likud Party, the party to which the Israeli Prime Minister belongs, stated, "I think we needed to invade Rafa yesterday, to go in and to get them. There are no uninvolved. We need to go in and kill and kill and kill. We need to kill them before they kill us." Taking their cue from the politicians, the Israeli army officials have followed suit in unchallenging the incitement to genocide and showing their contempt for this court. The Israeli Army Chief of Staff Lieutenant General Hazi Halevi stated following the Israeli Army siege and destruction of Al-Shifa Hospital in March twenty twenty-four, "Here is the realisation of an impressive strategy. There is a very, very important message here: A hospital is not a safe place." He described the operation as "a very high achievement", that is notwithstanding eyewitness reports of hundreds of civilians having been killed by Israeli troops in the hospital, including patients shot dead in their hospital beds. Mass graves and hundreds of Palestinian bodies were found following the withdrawal of the Israeli army from Al-Shifa Hospital, including bodies with canulas in their arms, some with their limbs tied. Brigadier General David Bar Khalifa, commander of the Thirty-Sixth Armoured Division of the Israeli Army, issued a letter to Israeli soldiers about to deploy in Gaza, exhorting them to continue the killing of Palestinians. "What has been will be no more. We shall go out to it in war. We shall pulverise every accursed plot of land from which it came. We shall destroy it and the memory of it." Brigadier Khalifa has faced no investigations, nor has he been relieved of his command. This is despite the explicit order of this court for investigations into cases of incitement to genocide. Brigadier Khalifa was in fact promoted to the rank of Major and the head of the Israeli Army Personnel Division. Similarly, when hundred-and-thirty senior officers in the Israeli army penned a letter calling on Israel's War Cabinet to not allow humanitarian supplies and the operation of hospitals in Gaza, they were not charged with incitement or prostitution. One of the officers would later be named as involved in the killing of World Central Kitchen workers. Genocidal rhetoric is not punished but rewarded by the Israeli government. On sixth March twenty twenty-four, reservist First Sergeant Yashin, a veteran from the April nineteen forty-eight Der Yasin massacre of at least two-hundred-and-fifty Palestinians, was rewarded with a certificate of thanks and commemoration by the Israeli president for his motivational speeches he gave to Israeli soldiers as they prepared for the ground invasion of Gaza in October twenty twenty-three. In at least one of those speeches, he had said, "Erase the memory of them. Erase them, their families, mothers and children. These animals can no longer live." In his speech at the award ceremony, Israeli President Herzog told the senior reservists, including Ezra Yachin, that "You have been a tremendous personal example for generations of Israel citizens and the whole world, and I want too, on behalf of all the Israeli people, to say to you, thank you." In their destruction of Rafa, Israeli soldiers deployed to Gaza continue to invoke the Prime Minister's speeches, which are themselves genocidal. In case what I have said is not clear enough, let us hear them in their own words. The destruction of Gaza and Palestinian life is understood by commanders and soldiers, as the video shows. An Israeli soldier from the ninety-two zero-three battalion commented as follows on photographs and footage he posted online of Palestinian homes and neighbourhoods in Khan Yunis, completely destroyed by the Israeli army. "This year, we were honoured to fulfil the command of the annihilation of Amalek, and may we finish the job." Such language continues to be widespread alongside calls by Israeli soldiers on the ground to conquer Gaza, to flatten Gaza, to erase Gaza, to destroy Gaza, and after that, Ramallah also. Israeli soldiers serving in Gaza continue to openly call for the deaths to Arabs, declaring, "May you burn alive", that Gaza is burning, that we will burn your mother and that all of such a... of such a here will burn in flames. The aims of Israel is to do no less than what its own Minister of Finance has stated, that is to ensure the total annihilation of Palestinians, that will erase the memory of Amalek. He has also called for Rafa to be completely conquered, and the sooner the better. Israel's genocidal intent continues to receive support and endorsement at the Knesset. As Tali Kotlib, a member of the Knesset and the Prime Minister's party, has stated, to attack Rafa as we attacked in the Northern Strip, unlike the responder intentionally, not specifically addressing, but rather the entire Rafa system, to attack mercilessly from the air, instead of turning an eye to the Hague Court, turn an eye to the people of Israel. Public statements such as this show that even members of the Israeli parliament are fully aware of the orders of this court, but have continued to openly incite genocide without censorship. Such sentiments are also widely expressed across Israeli society. Many Israelis, including Israelis living in illegal settlements in the West Bank, have actioned statements by government officials calling for the denial of aid to Gaza by destroying food aids on its way, including setting trucks on fire, putting sugar in tanks and destroying the food itself. Israeli public officials, including singers inciting to genocide in Gaza, have had their incitement rewarded. One singer who popularized and adapted to Israel's current military operations in Gaza, the racist Israel football chant, "May Your Village Burn," changed it to "May Gaza Be Erased," and singing it to Israeli soldiers in live performances, was presented with a certificate of appreciation for his work for the IDF soldiers during the war by the Deputy Speaker of Knesset, hosted by Israel's Minister of Social Equality and the Advancement of Women. Another singer referenced by South Africa before this court in the January twenty twenty four application for his call to erase Gaza and not to leave a single person there has similarly been rewarded. Both were brought to the attention of Israeli authorities in South Africa's application and pleadings before this court. Neither of them, nor any of the other Israeli officials and civilians inciting to genocide against the Palestinians, have been prosecuted, much less punished. The genocidal acts described in South Africa's application were foreseen and foreseeable from the onset. Israel's intent was always to destroy Palestinian life and to wipe them off the face of the earth. Rafa is the final stand. Without Rafa, there is no more Palestinian life in Gaza to speak of, no more Palestinian identity and no possibility of reconstruction. Mr. President, the rule of law can only survive through the orders of this court. If the rule of law is to have any meaning, let it be today and with this case. It is no longer enough to order unhindered access to humanitarian aid when it is in fact the military operation in Gaza that is preventing it. It is no longer enough to encourage compliance with the peremptory precepts of the Genocide Convention when Israel's deliberate contempt for the international rule of law has been so plain and so public. Mr. President, it is now my honor to call upon Ms. Plene Niklori to address the courts on the remedies we ask for and why this court can and should grant the order.
I thank Mr. Ugayte for his statement. J'appelle la prison, Madame.
I would like to now call on Willeni Nigley. You have the floor.
Monsieur le président.
Mr. President, members of the court, it is indeed a great honor for me to appear again before this court on behalf of South Africa, even though I can only regret that the surrounding circumstances are tragic and extremely serious. Today, almost five months after your first order for provisional measures, the Gaza Strip has been almost completely razed to the ground. Day after day, surrounded from all sides, its Palestinian people, men, women, children, entire families, subjected to the genocidal military campaign of the state of Israel, are being massacred, terrorized, starved and traumatized forever. In light of the dramatic developments unfolding on the Gaza Strip, South Africa feels compelled to once again request your invaluable intervention and beseech you to modify or indicate new provisional measures, in particular, an explicitly and immediate cessation of Israeli military operations in Rafa and everywhere else in the territory in order to protect and also to prevent the total annihilation of what remains of the Gaza Strip, of Palestine and of its people.
Mr. President, members of the court, there is an urgent need for further or modified explicit and specific provisional measures to protect the Palestinians in Gaza from the irreparable prejudice caused by Israel's continuing violations of the Genocide Convention and of this court's orders, including an express order for the immediate cessation of Israel's military operations in Rafa and across the whole of the Gaza Strip. The change in circumstances and new facts demand it. The extreme risk of irreparable prejudice require it. Israel's approach to the court's previous orders renders it imperatively urgent. The court has the power to do it, and our shared humanity compels it. Turning to each of those five propositions in turn, first, the change in the situation amounting to new facts demands the indication of further or modified explicit and specific provisional measures. When South Africa appeared before you on the eleventh of January, urgently requesting then an order for the cessation of Israel's military operations, humanitarians were already out of words to describe the situation in Gaza. Today, they say there are, quote, "no words left that can do any justice to the people of Gaza." Tens of thousands of Palestinians have since been killed or injured, including one child killed or wounded every ten minutes since Israel's military operations began, including an almost incomprehensible number of child amputees. Since March in particular, hundreds and thousands of Palestinians, particularly the young, elderly and vulnerable, are dying or at risk of dying of communicable diseases and infections that are running rife due to the rising temperatures in ever more crowded living conditions amidst mountains of waste, fly and mosquito infestations and raw sewage flowing in the bombed-out streets. Since the court's last order, entire hospitals, places of learning and healing, including Al-Shifa Hospital, older than the state of Israel itself, have been destroyed and turned into sites of horror and mass death. Gaza's devoted and steadfast doctors and medics have been killed and buried in mass graves alongside the patients they risked and ultimately gave their lives to care for. The same fate now awaits Rafa's remaining hospitals, doctors and medics. Israel's attack on Rafa, its attempt to control all of Gaza's borders, followed by attacks on the north and the middle areas in recent days, which are of unprecedented violence, even amid the horrors of the past seven months, herald a turning point beyond which there is no going back, which is reflected in what Honore calls, and I quote, "a new level of desperation in Gaza." As this court has heard, this is in effect the end game for Gaza and for its Palestinian people, unfolding under the world's watch. This may well be the last chance for the court to act to ensure their survival. Second, the extreme risks of irreparable prejudice demand the indication of further or modified explicit and specific provisional measures. The situation in Gaza could not be more urgent, as reflected in the increase in Palestinian fatalities and injuries since the court's last order and the spreading famine and disease. Acts susceptible of causing irreparable prejudice can plainly occur at any moment before the court makes a final decision on this case, demanding the indication of further or modified explicit, specific provisional measures to protect the rights found by this court to be plausible. In Rafa in particular, in addition to the widespread risk of violent death and injury facing the terrified population of displaced Palestinians, as the court has heard, dialysis patients and premature babies face immediate risk of death. Some one point two million Palestinians will be deprived of access to healthcare if its hospitals are rendered inoperable. The level of destruction that Israel has caused across Gaza and is now wreaking on Rafa threatens the very survival of future Palestinian generations in Gaza. Recent evidence from a former Israeli reservist active in Gaza indicates that soldiers on the ground treat Israeli-ordered evacuation areas, such as those recently ordered for significant parts of Rafa and northern Gaza, as extermination zones wherein orders to shoot and kill Palestinians are made on the basis of their location alone. This in itself demonstrates the extreme risk to the right of the Palestinians in Gaza not to be subjected to acts of genocide, as does the decision by Israel to deploy two thousand-pound so-called dumb bombs in ever more densely populated areas in the stated, quote, "interests of saving more expensive armaments." The routine, repeated authorization of the killing in one strike of hundreds of Palestinian civilians, men, women, children, babies, the elderly and infirm, in order to kill a single individual believed to be a senior Hamas commander, is yet further evidence of that risk. So too are the repeated and routine authorizations for tens of Palestinians to be killed when Israel is bombing so-called low-level targets, so apparently low-level as to be nicknamed garbage targets. It is also now clear that Israel is heavily relying on artificial intelligence in identifying which Palestinians in Gaza are to live and to die. One such system appears to function as a form of target machine, generating so-called kill lists of Palestinians selected for execution on bases as tenuous as being in a WhatsApp group with another identified target. Another is the chilling. Bezale reportedly justified its continuing military operations on the asserted basis that, quote, "there is no order forbidding us from doing something we're doing today, and the fighting will continue as usual." Indeed, Israel has gone so far as to claim that the court orders are a significant success on the grounds that the court, I quote, "rejected" South Africa's central request to stop the fighting in Gaza. The court's reluctance to date to order directly and explicitly that Israel cease its military operations in Gaza in order to give effect to the provisional measures indicated by the court, relying instead on necessary implication, has cynically been used by Israel as cover for its conduct. Israel continues to kill and harm Palestinians in Gaza in violation of the court's orders, while its soldiers and political leaders alike continue to publicly express clear genocidal intent towards them. It is self-evident that the provisional measures indicated in the court's previous orders, quote, "do not fully address the consequences arising from the changes in the situation that now pertain." The severity of the situation involving horrific human suffering mandates that the court make explicit that which was implicit in its previous orders, and that it now order Israel to cease its military operations in unequivocal, express terms. Nothing else will suffice. In its March order, in light of what the court found to be, quote, "the worsening conditions of life faced by Palestinians in Gaza," the court placed a heightened obligation on Israel not only to enable the provision of humanitarian assistance but to ensure it. In light of Israel's abject failure to even meet the lower threshold of enabling aid and the ever worsening conditions of life faced by Palestinians in Gaza following Israel's seizure of the Rafa Crossing, the court must at least modify its provisional measures in order to leave no doubt as to what is required of Israel and to give full effect to its previous provisional measures. As the World Food Programme has made clear, I quote, "the United Nations and its partners have the means to scale up to all two point two million people in Gaza, but only if a humanitarian ceasefire happens." Further, given Israel's manifest failure to ensure the preservation of evidence in Gaza, the recent repeated grim discoveries of mass graves and what the United Nations has called, quote, "the prevailing climate of impunity in Israel," Israel must be ordered to immediately take all effective measures to ensure the access of persons able to investigate ongoing atrocities. The measure is critical not just to preserving the rights of Palestinians in South Africa in these proceedings, or indeed to the court's ability to exercise its own judicial functions appropriately. Rather, as a spokesperson for the United Nations Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights recently stated, "These violations should not get forgotten about. They need to be recorded, they need to be reported widely by the media, they need to result in pressure from member states that do have leverage over the parties to the conflict to bring such violations to an end. They need to be recorded so that investigations do take place, and ultimately there is accountability and the cycle of impunity does not continue over and over and over again." Fourth, the court has the power to modify or make an explicit order for Israel to cease its military operations in Rafa and in Gaza more broadly and to withdraw from the Gaza Strip. The court is empowered and indeed compelled, given the prevailing catastrophic situation in Gaza, to order an express end to Israel's military activities. That is the only measure now capable of preventing irreparable prejudice to the fundamental rights in issue and of ensuring compliance with the court's orders. The fact that such an order would be directed at Israel alone is no bar to the court ordering it. is no bar to the court ordering it. That is for at least three reasons. One, Article forty-one of the court statute empowers the court to indicate any provisional measures that, quote, "ought to be taken to preserve the respective rights of either party if it considers that the circumstances so require." Article forty-one does not require reciprocity. There is no need for an order to be made against both parties. Two, the Genocide Convention itself is no bar to a one-sided cessation order. On the contrary, the absolute prohibition on genocide applies in both non-international armed conflicts as indeed the terrible examples Rwanda and Darfur make clear, just as in international armed conflict between two states. It applies where only one belligerent is a party to the Genocide Convention just as it applies where all of them are. It applies regardless of any claims of self-defense which can never constitute a justification for genocide and indeed it applies in peace just as much as in war. And that is because the prohibition on genocide is focused on the absolute inalienable rights of groups, of peoples to be protected from genocide no matter the underlying circumstances or putative justifications. It makes no sense whatsoever to suggest that the court could not order a state party to the Genocide Convention to suspend its military operations against a non-state actor in order to prevent genocide unless the non-state actor was itself disarmed. Indeed, it would be contrary to the very objectives of the Genocide Convention which the court described over seventy years ago as having been adopted for a purely humanitarian and civilizing purpose. It would similarly be nonsensical if in a claim under the Genocide Convention the court could order one party to cease its military operations when that party was not even alleged to be committing genocide as in Ukraine and Russia but could not hear when the court has itself determined a real and imminent risk to the right of a national, racial or ethnical group not to be subjected to acts of genocide. The evidence before the court indicates that the extent of the carnage in Gaza is of a much greater magnitude than that that pertained in Ukraine and Russia. Indeed, the carnage in Gaza is of an order which exceeds by far the necessities of war and the limits imposed by the laws of war. As stated by the United Nations High Commissioner for Human Rights, what Israel is doing is, quote, "beyond warfare." Not only is the court empowered to call for it to end, it is duty bound to do so. Third, the fact that the United Nations Security Council could itself order a cessation of hostilities in Gaza is no bar to the court's exercise of its own powers in this regard. Notably, the distinct and vital role the court was intended to play in preventing genocide was pointedly foreshadowed by the United Nations delegation to the negotiations leading to the very creation of the Genocide Convention. The United States delegate commented that if cases of genocide were brought before the Security Council, the whole question of the veto would be involved. States might try to avoid submitting their disputes to the International Court of Justice where they would be settled on purely legal grounds and might instead submit them to the Security Council where they would be settled on political grounds. In circumstances such as this, where the veto power has been wielded such devastating effect against the Palestinian people, the indispensable role of a court in ensuring the universal application of the Genocide Convention, its prohibitions and its protections to all peoples equally cannot be overstated. As noted by the court in indicating provisional measures in March, the Security Council's then-operative ceasefire resolution, quote, "demanded an immediate ceasefire for the month of Ramadan, respected by all parties, leading to a lasting sustainable ceasefire." As underscored by the President of the Court, the March provisional measures could, I quote, "only take full effect," end quote, if the ceasefire was respected. No such resolution is in place. The court must itself therefore create the circumstances necessary for its provisional measures to take full effect. It must order Israel to cease its military operations. Fifth and finally, our shared humanity compels the indication of further or modified explicit provisional measures. As recently stated by the United Nations Assistant Secretary General for Humanitarian Affairs, quote, "the war in Gaza has entered yet another horrifying phase. Gaza is now a health scape for millions trapped under incessant bombardment where those who have escaped death and injury now risk losing their lives because of a lack of food, safe water, medicine and healthcare." Gaza has, in her words, "become a moral stain on the conscience of our collective humanity." I conclude with a slide. It reports an account of a doctor's recent experience in a hospital in Gaza following his departure from the Strip. He says this describing one of the patients there. "There was the man in his fifties, forgotten in a room, having had both legs amputated. He had lost his kids, his grandkids, his home and he's alone in the corner of this dark hospital, maggots going out of his wounds and he was screaming, 'The worms are eating me alive. Please help me.' That was just one out of, I don't know, I just stopped counting because those are the people I think of because they're still there." That sums up what Gaza is today. It's people severely wounded, with life-altering disabling injuries, bereaved of their entire families, homeless, alone, trapped, without electricity or even basic healthcare. Seven months later, after two orders from this court, they are still there enduring this horror. They are crying out for help. An order for an immediate cessation of Israel's military operations in Gaza is now their only hope. Enough is enough. South Africa cannot but reiterate its respectful and humble call on this court to do what is in its power to do, what the drafters of the Genocide Convention called on it to do, what our shared humanity compels it to do, to listen to that desperate cry for help from Gaza and to order Israel to withdraw from Gaza and to ceasefire. Monsieur le Président.
Mr. President, Members of the Court, I wish to thank you for your kind attention and I would like you to ask the agent of South Africa to take the floor to present his concluding submissions.
Mr. Gargi, for your statement, I now give the floor back to Mr. Ambassador. You have the floor next.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the court, it is my honour to deliver to your excellencies the final provisional measures that South Africa requests from this court. The exponential gravity of the situation in Gaza has already demanded that South Africa return to this court on four consecutive occasions, calling for provisional measures to stop the destruction of Gaza on a scale not witnessed since World War Two and epitomized by the most unbearable human suffering. Willfully ignoring the previous provisional measures, Israel is acting with complete impunity in Gaza, escalating hostilities in a final wave of apocalyptic destruction from which there is no return. There is a danger which stems from a form of amnesia and denial by former colonial powers in relation to the crimes associated with colonial violence perpetrated against indigenous peoples. This includes the denial of genocide. This denial is clearly at play in Palestine. Israel is a settler colonial apartheid regime and the current government is now being accused of engaging in genocide. This accusation is not being leveled at any people based on their ethnicity, nationality or confessional preference. Rather, it is being leveled at those political and military leaders who have dehumanized the Palestinian people through genocidal rhetoric as human animals, encouraging their killing and destruction. It is leveled against a state whose leaders are openly calling for a second Nakba, shielded by international impunity, which has enabled the perpetuation of decades of generational violence and systematic oppression against the Palestinian people to maintain the domination and the expansion of the settler colonial state. As a matter of extreme agency, South Africa as a state party to the Convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide respectfully requests the court to indicate the following provisional measures, the text of which has been amended to reflect the ever increasing gravity of the situation. South Africa respectfully requests the court to order the State of Israel as a state party to the Genocide Convention and as a party to these proceedings to, one, immediately and further to its obligations under the court's previous orders of twenty-sixth January twenty twenty-four and twenty-eighth March twenty twenty-four, cease its military operations in the Gaza Strip, including in Rafah Governorate, and withdraw from the Rafah Crossing and immediately, totally and unconditionally withdraw Israeli army from the entirety of the Gaza Strip. Two, immediately and further to its obligations under the provisional measure four of the court's twenty-sixth January twenty twenty-four order and provisional measures two A and two B of the court's decision of March twenty twenty-four, take all effective measures to ensure and facilitate the unimpeded access to Gaza of United Nations and other officials engaged in the provision of humanitarian aid and assistance to the population of Gaza, as well as fact-finding missions, internationally mandated bodies and/or officials, investigators and journalists in order to access and record conditions on the ground in Gaza and enable the effective preservation and retention of evidence and ensure that its military does not act to prevent such access, provision, preservation or retention. Three, submit an open report to the court, A, on all measures taken to give effect to these provisional measures within one week as from the date of this order and B, on all measures taken to give effect to all previous provisional measures indicated by the court within one month as from the date of this order. Mr. President, distinguished members of the court, this concludes South Africa's pleading. I thank you for your kind attention. I also thank the registry, its staff and the interpreters for their invaluable assistance. Finally, my thanks also go to the South African team. Thank you very much.
I thank the agent of South Africa whose statement brings an end to the single round of oral arguments of South Africa as well as this afternoon's sitting. The court will meet again tomorrow, Friday, May seventeen at ten a.m. to hear the State of Israel present a single round of oral argument. The sitting is adjourned.